Start with a roll call viola- or yeah, roll call violation. Roll call.
Alan, no violations.
No violations, not present. All right, and our town planner Vanessa is online. Hunter is our systems administrator this evening. He's getting paid the big bucks for IT work.
Yeah, keep it short, I'm on overtime, so.
Do yours work the same way mine does? Just goes down?
I think so.
Yeah. So, review and approval of minutes. I don't know, there were a litany of like, either grammatical or spelling errors through it. My recommendation would be to put off approving them until we can get them corrected, because I had more than a dozen. Does anybody have any objection to that?
Or to that motion?
Okay. Some of it, there were spots where like, it doesn't, I couldn't even follow what was written. So if anybody has it, I'll collect everybody's comments and I can connect with Barbara tomorrow or something. If that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, if you could just give them to Barbara. I know that she was trying to get them done super fast.
Yeah.
Didn't have an ample time to review, probably.
Yeah. Not, I mean, not a huge, huge issue, just mostly, just cleaning it up so that it reads appropriately. Okay. Capital Improvement Projects. Vanessa, do you have anything you would like to kick off with this?
Um. Mr. Chairman, just to let everybody know, we went, after we took our comments from our last work session on this, we went to the, or went to the select board and they had minor comments mainly in relation to changing the narrative or adding a few items to the narrative. And so tonight I ask you to vote to adopt the CIP. Based on those changes, the spreadsheet rankings that we discussed during our works, the planning board's work session did not change. There was a little bit of discussion, but if anybody has any questions about it, just let me know and I can further answer those, but that's what we're looking for tonight is to vote to approve this EIP. Thank you.
Commentary from the board?
Just as an FYI, the select board voted last night not to put the Bridges and Dam on the warrant.
I did hear that. Appreciate it. I thank you for taking our feedback back to them.
And I think you had also brought up Lake Shore Culver, and evidently that plan hasn't been considered by the stakeholders and felt that that had not been viable.
Yeah, I, I don't. Has anybody, has anybody been down through there? Have you, has anybody seen it?
They usually go, because you know, pretty close by.
Yeah.
It's a mess. Sometimes the water runs over the road too.
Yes. It is just such a short run to, to connect through it. It's like now this time of year, it's about as easy as it, as it gets. Okay. Other comments, commentary, feedback? Looking for a motion?
Take a motion to approve the capital improvement program is written.
So, I have a motion to approve the CIP for 2023. Seconded. You can just abstain from it if you're.
Kathy, hello, hi.
Crystal, Tessier.
Yeah, bye. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize since I can't really tell was there. Who seconded it and then Donna abstained, is that correct?
Yes, it was motioned by Ron, seconded. Excuse me, seconded by Bob Tessier.
Okay, thank you.
And Masucci abstained. Next item on the list is to approve the Planning Board Rules of Procedure.
This is Vanessa again. I just have a quick question, is Donna a full voting member tonight? I didn't, I didn't know if you had done that or not. I just wanted to make that clear for the record if it was not done.
Yes, Donna is a full voting member.
Okay. So for tonight, for the rules of procedure, just as an overview, we've been going through this a lot. And these are the final comments that came from, Laura has reviewed it. We added an additional section that you may have not noticed before for waivers at the very end of the rules of procedure, that's pretty standard to put in. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, otherwise I'd propose that the board vote to accept and adopt the rules of procedure updates. Thank you.
Take a motion to accept the procedure as amended on December 13th, 2022.
It was motioned by Ron Allard, seconded by John Driscoll.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman. Kathy, hello, hi.
Crystal, Tessier.
Alan, right.
Yeah, bye. All right. This is unanimously. So the draft, decision on draft zoning warrant articles, this would be the first public, or the first public hearing date would be January 3rd for it. All the corrections are here. This is what's been, what was reviewed by the town's attorney, correct Vanessa?
Yes, that is correct. So I did, just to back up a little bit for the meeting date, I initially put 6:00 PM, but we can hold it during our regular scheduled 6:30 PM Planning Board meeting, just first on the agenda. If the board decides they want to do that direction. Yes, the attorney has reviewed all of those amendments. You may note from this one, from the previous version, the major difference is she combined two of the, the home occupation as well as the allowing for one, the one resident that we were talking about. I know that John Driscoll, which I thank you for being there last night, the Select Board had described those in detail as well, like why those were two. We can still, at this point, this is still a work session, so we can look at separating them out. I think she combined it, I believe she combined the two, so that way it would be more more of what the town is trying to encapsure to do. If, but if there's further questions and discussion as you guys go through this, I can certainly bring those back to her to have that separated out if the board feels that they want to separate them out.
Feedback from the board?
Mr. Chairman, also to note, you guys are not voting on it tonight. You can vote on them on, at the public hearing. So tonight, if there's still questions or you, or you want to go forward with what is as written, this will be advertised probably won't go in tomorrow's paper, but Thursday's paper, that this will, these will be heard at the public hearing meeting. And anything that's voted by the Planning Board at that public meeting, if there's not a majority vote, it does not go forward to the ballot. Just to give you some additional information. Thank you.
The only thing I had questions on is the last article that was added on here is to amend the definition of structures to include poles or pilings, but to provide that poles or pilings shall not be construed as structures for the purpose of the setback requirement. Are we just talking poles and pilings as independent items out in the, in a space, but poles or pilings used for a pole barn, so to speak, or?
Poles to hold up a fence.
Or originated in our office recently as well. In addition to that, for like solar poles, someone that, we see a lot of solar coming in and it, our zoning ordinance doesn't say that if it's a structure or not. And in the definition under the solar things, if it's considered a structure or not, it's seen as a the definition of, we thought that'd be the best spot to put that, if that makes sense.
Okay, my only concern is it still strikes me as a bit confusing by saying the definition of a structure to include poles or pilings to provide that poles or pilings shall not be construed as structures for the purpose of setback requirements. So is it or isn't it a structure then?
It's a legal structure.
I understand the confusion of the language. I, that was a language that was proposed by Laura. I had a little bit more simpler language that just said pole or pilings. But we can definitely discuss that.
I, I just feel like it's, if, if we're going to be involved in it here, and I think about people on this board turning over and new people starting, it's going to be even more confusing to them.
It pushes us out later, next year, but it's not like, round mounted solar is popping up.
Is that what's driving it?
Well, as Vanessa said, it's one thing they considered, but.
This come from John, Vanessa?
Yes, it did. John and I were actually working with a customer like a week and a half ago in relation to, because they were trying to do solar and if it was, if the poles were allowed in the setback or not. So that's where it came up as, do we see it as a structure? We don't see it as a structure in the definition. It does not show anything in relation to that. But if you go, I don't have my book in front of me, but if you go to definitions, I believe it's the definitions for, or in the article for the solar. I took the word pole or pilings from that article. John and I both discussed that'd be the best, like, the best way to put it, even though it's only like three, or like three words that it, adding too much makes it more confusing, and I know that Laura added more to it.
It becomes item number, letter S under the regulations too.
Correct.
Does it need to be defined in the definitions?
Yeah, I think it would be nice to know what ordinance we're changing and exactly, you know, I don't know what where this is in the ordinances and what language is actually we're proposing. So I'm confused by this. The definitions that's going to include pilings, but then it's going to be included for setback requirements, I mean, should we change the language in specific ordinances? There's six sections. Rather than, I don't know where this would go. I don't know where we go with this.
Right, because.
Such a structure, right?
Right, and if you look at structure, anything construction, constructed, installed, placed, or erected, whether above or below grade. Unless otherwise stated in this ordinance, the following structures are exempt from the building permit requirements set forth for Section 15.4.1 and shall not be construed as structures for purposes of setback requirements, but shall but so be construed for all other purposes. Sheds may require an administrative zoning permit, see Article 9.5. Signs, stone walls, septic systems, driveway, sidewalks, parking lots, home propane or heating oil tanks, one-story detached accessory structures used as tool and storage sheds, playhouses, and similar uses, providing the floor area does not exceed 200 square feet. Retaining walls that are not over four feet in height, measured from top of the foot, footing to the top of the wall unless supporting a a surcharge, the differential in grade shall be no more than four. Water tanks supported directly upon grade if the capacity does not exceed 5,000 gallons in the ratio, blah, 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 blah. I'll skip through it. I'll save everybody. If I, this is under the definitions, page 89 in our zoning ordinance. But eight, 89 and nine, it's both. But what I would look at is if we're talking about adding a pedestal-mounted solar array, why would we not, as an exemption, why would we not just add it right here? And make it item S?
That, Mr. Chairman, if I may address the board, it's Vanessa. That's my initial intent and that's, Laura had changed the language. That's where we discussed, I'm putting it as item number S as pole and pilings, or if there's a better language that we could put in there that the board feels would be better suited, that's where we felt was most appropriate.
Can you say that again?
I think she said that that's where they recommended putting it, and the attorney made a different proposal. So maybe Vanessa can talk with the town's attorney and verify if the original proposal, like you recommended, is suitable.
Or John, or yeah. Why, why, so sometimes attorneys do things to make work for themselves. Yeah, so why would we encourage something that creates a convoluted zoning ordinance as opposed to being clear and concise? I say we can take what she has under advisement and then say, thank you, but we're not moving in that direction. We're going to put it in our ordinance where it actually makes sense.
Appreciate her input.
Yeah, yes, thank you, but we're not going to do that. Are you okay with that, Vanessa?
Yes, what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman, is that you, the board feels that most appropriate place is under the definition of structures as item S. And the language that John and I had just put in was just poles and pilings, but if there's a better wording the board would like to put, because it was in reference to solar, but we didn't necessarily want to limit it to solar if there were other poles or pilings that we didn't foresee.
Me, I always think of pilings as something supporting a structure. And supporting a solar array as well, I mean, that's basically a pole.
Yeah, that would be a pole mount or a tracking system.
The example we had for pilings would be just a shed and a wet, a buffer holding the four corners of the shed so water could pass through. So it is a structure, it's providing a purpose.
Like sheds, sheds are exempt already, right?
Well, none of the sitting on the ground in a, in a buffer. They have to be on raised up. So water could pass through. To John. So, stick, like you said.
But if you could build a shed with 100, would shed, would shed do the trick?
That's to be small.
Yeah. Under 200 square feet. But in the buffer, it has to be on raised up a little bit, I mean, like six inches.
In one button, one of the stuff, yeah. It doesn't say it.
I, well, he does, does bring up.
Is he trying to clean it up so that he does say it?
I don't.
I don't understand why it suddenly is important to clean poles and pilings. If we get by, is there suddenly a big demand, Vanessa, for to add this?
She said it's a solar project.
Yeah.
So it has come up a few times recently. The most recent, like I said, was a couple of weeks ago, in that the customer comes wanting to putting in solar panels on the ground, but they have to meet certain setbacks. The question was like, well, what setbacks do I have to meet? How it's currently written, it's not very clear. So we wanted to make it clear to anybody that's coming in to do these solar things like on poles, like they were doing an array or what have you, that they didn't have to meet setbacks. Currently in our zoning ordinance, they have to meet setbacks. So we felt like that this could be an exemption as a, under the structure definition for it.
I don't think it says, I think politically there's a point like that.
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't it, isn't that covered in the solar issue? Because there was also that concern about the last thing you want, somebody putting a tracking mount system practically right against the property line and it's tracking around the edge of your, your building or your house there. Right, so we, that was written into the zo- into the solar zoning ordinance. I almost left my book home tonight, because I was like, yeah, we're kind of.
I'm looking it up now as well.
Okay, we talked about this. It's not in there, but we talked about whether we should not subject solar, solar systems to setback. And I think we decided to leave it alone. And we talked about whether we should allow it to not meet setback, and I think we ended up saying the neighbors might have a problem because right in the property. There is something, I think we decided to leave it alone. And we talked about it.
Right, that we were going to leave the setbacks in place on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know that there's, there's on the, in the zoning ordinance, they do talks about like lot covers too. So that is in there. But I was not aware and John was not aware about the previous discussions, I believe.
Yeah, we talked about it. We were thinking about leaving it alone, but we decided due to the impacts of the neighbors, we decided to not do that.
Right, that you didn't want some, you didn't want to have a house right there and somebody's solar array right next to it.
Especially where, you know, they're south of them and the panels are oriented south, in a clear all day.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we decided to leave it alone.
So we want to use that.
If it's a non-beating, it's what.
So, just for staff clarification, please, Mr. Chairman. So for, so for instance, for this gentleman that, or this customer that came in, we said that he could only do like the 500 lot area, but he was talking about poles and meeting those setbacks, and then he couldn't meet those setbacks. And then we said, I mean, at this time, obviously, that's what our ordinance says. And what I'm hearing is that we should keep it how it is, and then that person would just have to go to relief to ZBA to do, to go into those setbacks.
Yeah, because, because you want the, it, it's only, it's fair that the neighbor has, gets to defend their case so that they're not impacted by somebody doing something that directly like impacts their property too.
And to the pilot, I mean, I don't think, we just want to be kind of planners to put filings in. I think probably it actually comes with a case by case as well.
Good ever review again.
I think so.
Your bottom line, we want to ditch this amendment.
That would be. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so Vanessa, we're not in favor of supporting that amendment.
Okay.
Other ones that I had questions about, on the first page, second from the bottom. Removing 3.1.8 with the justification that it's included in 20. I mean, I don't think anybody's proposed that.
Sorry, which one was it?
Second from the bottom.
Well, it was just like we took anything to do with signs out of the subdivision. He was perishing, should consolidate all that into section 20.
But there's other stuff in, in 3.1 that's we're not taking out, so. You know what I mean? I think I just, if we're not, we're not moving all of that into 20. And 20 is the only place, and 3 is the only place, I mean, it says we can't put it in the right way and stuff like that, so. We're not moving all the language.
So, you saying 3.18 signage? 3.18, 1, 2, and 3 signage?
Well, I think it refers to basically parentheses 2 and, and actually parentheses 3. But there's parentheses 1 and 2 that's not being, it's not really duplicated in 20. So.
So we should keep them, but move them to 8 to 20?
Well, I think it just, I mean, I think the signage, you know, as you know, I was looking at that. I've got a lot of time on it, and at the end of the day, I have a big bunch of changes, I think we can work on some more.
Yeah, we totally put it off.
Until we see that for, yeah, absolutely.
So you're removing this.
So.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chairman. So in relation to this article, we had talked great length about how that this is already incorporated, this, the section 3.1.8. At least two of them were the removal of signs. Once again, it was through attorney review that to take out that, that we were going to take out that entire section because section 20, or I believe it was 20, covers all of that. Because it contradict, the language contradicts each other.
It does, but I, for example, you know, parentheses 2, where who can remove it and stuff is definitely not in 20.
That is true.
Except in 3, it's not in 20. So rather than just, you know, delete all three without carefully referencing it, I just let it wait.
Are there aspects of 3 that, like?
It's just in two places.
Yeah, my, I guess what I'm looking at is are there portions that we could line out and then essentially say, okay, we want to, we want to line these items out because they already exist over here.
But the one that isn't.
Needs to be added, or leave it, leave it out there, or just add it into the, into 20 and have a warrant article that adds that into section 20, our zoning, or Article 20, our zoning ordinance.
There's some other issues with the signage that I think I've identified, but haven't got locked up yet. If you want, I mean, the changes are, I think are recommended, or, you know, half a page. But to fix it all, it hasn't got to the attorney yet. So I think, at this point, for me, I'd rather just leave it alone until we get to look at more comprehensive. We're up against, what's our timing?
Tonight, Mr. Chairman, tonight, as you need to make your final changes, because going before the public hearing, you don't have any other things to introduce at this time. I know that we've gone over our signs a lot. Aside, as well as with the board. And from the previous, just to let you all know, from the previous version that we had talked through, we had discussed removing all of those three sections. And at that time, I thought there was a consensus to remove them because they were captured in 20. If we would just want to leave them alone right now, then I suggest that the board just leaves them as is.
Yeah, I, I think all the language in 3 is not in 20. So just remove them right now without being able to insert, make it, make a comprehensive adjustment. This is the last bite edit. I just say, lose it.
So in the, in the previous, just to, just to clarify, in the previous version, we did add the version I sent to Laura that we, that before this one, it said was to add a section 20.1, those run to removal of signs.
But it's not in here, Vanessa. You know, so.
Right, this is where I'm in the rock and a hard place, because that's where the attorney goes in and she, what I sent her when you talked last time, doesn't, so.
Vanessa, if I may, the.
I don't know. I don't know what to say, yes.
Yeah, so I saw some of those communications from the attorney, and basically the point that she was making is that shouldn't be in your ordinance anyways. The removal of signs is subject to state statute. And duplicating state statute in your ordinance isn't super productive because the statute could change and your ordinance can't change statute. Your ordinance isn't going to change what's going to happen when there's, when, in those situations, that's enumerated in the, in the ordinance occur. And so I think the attorney's recommendation was you can take it out of there and not put it back in anywhere, because it doesn't really belong in your ordinance. It's state law.
So why would we not make a reference to it in here, removal of signs, see state statute related to signs?
Where are the statutes, where are the state?
Because the justification for not mirroring. Because the justification for not mirroring the state is that the state law might change. And there's no need to update your ordinance. But if you were, I mean, to the chair's point, if you had a note that says removal subject to applicable state laws.
And you referenced state statute.
I hate when I'm looking at this and now I have to go, I had to go find a book of RSAs in order to find the rest of the, well, why don't we just, what is it? We got it.
One of our earlier ones did reference RSA 66417. Yeah, we, that was deleted, so.
Yeah, I mean, so our language is close with state sense, but it's not exactly the same. But, you know, to me, it's close enough that it doesn't violate, it's not, there's not a substantive difference between the state regulations and our regulation.
Right. No, I was just making the point that, so you're certainly welcome to include duplicate language in your ordinance that exists in state statute. But the reason the attorney was recommending not doing it is because it's generally advisable to let the, the the jurisdiction having authority in removal of signs being state statute.
Do its part.
Yeah, be the prevailing.
Well, let's, let's, let me talk about, and let me ask question on that, Connor, because certainly they have the right to say what, what happens on their right of ways. But what about town right of ways? I mean, why don't we have, why don't we, why don't we have the jurisdiction in that?
State statute complicate, contemplates town roads. So the, the state statute doesn't exclusively, some portions of the statute refer exclusively to state right of ways. But it also gives local maintenance personnel the authority to remove signs that are deemed a nuisance to travel or, you know, that impact the, the safety of travel. And so it lists the, you know, state or the town highway department and the local police department. And that applies to town roads as well. So maybe you have a question and maybe it doesn't need to be resolved now, but maybe you have a question for the town's attorney that is there any ability to identify additional authority at a local level than what's provided by state statute? And if there's the ability to do that, could it be incorporated into the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I think, you know, what got me started on the signs is, you know, we have, we have a candidate select with those ads of signs up nine, you know, nine months in advance of the election. And that doesn't seem to me to be appropriate for our town when we're trying to reduce sign clutter and aesthetics and stuff like that. And all they have, you know, the attorney is, this seems to me a very reasonable thing to do to prevent sign clutter. And, you know, I guess I'm not here what we can't do. I like to do, what can we draft that will allow us to do something that seems very, very reasonable? Stop people from putting up signs nine months before the election that are going to be trashed in the springtime because they've been snowed on the plow.
Well, I didn't realize that discussion was about both of these. Didn't think we needed. So the one about removal of signage and the one about how, about the 60 days.
I was only referring to removal.
You're only.
Yep.
And I'm, I won't give, the third, right now we have 30 days. One of 60 days, I think it's still reasonable and I have no problem.
Right, because didn't anyone enforce that they're being?
I don't think so.
Well, one of our earlier ones had a mention here that the, um, unbarred to zoning ordinance would be in compliance with the RSA. It's like a drug based statement that we're not going to make it, but of course that, that was one of the four sign things that was deleted from. I guess after the attorney saw them.
If I could.
Sure.
Or did you have something? So the, I guess maybe the first thing the board should decide is if you plan to take anything about signs to the warrant in 2023. It sounds like maybe not, taking the temperature of the room, seeing one nod.
Off the 60 day. We've got.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with.
Anybody else fine with the 60 day thing?
I find sleeping down.
Yeah.
I think 30 is too short.
Okay. Yep.
And I think it's just not, 60 days is good.
Okay.
So if that one stays, but there's a vote, a discussion and a vote from the planning board saying that it is our goal to, for 2024, work on a zoning ordinance amendment which addresses how, addresses sign clutter in advance of elections or whatever the situation may be and task staff and the town's attorney and whatever else to work on that goal. So to your point about, I'm sick of hearing what we can't do, I want to hear what we can do. So the planning board give directive through a vote, a policy direction to staff and the town's attorney to develop a zoning amendment which accomplishes a certain goal. What I heard you say is I'm sick of seeing the sign clutter nine months before an election. So obviously there are, there are frameworks that exist in the First Amendment and Supreme Court case law which limit your ability to do that based, content based. But our zoning ordinance as it exists now isn't content based. Our zoning ordinance says 30 days before an election. But that could be happy birthday signs. That could be real estate signs. It has to be general.
Right.
Of course.
Ron Allard hates signs.
Those, those should be allowed, but I, I can only have a birthday sign, you know, 30 days for an election? What if my birthday is not 30 days for an election?
But the, the sign ordinance as it's written down now, and this is why I think, and maybe you don't do this in this work session if it's going to take longer. Because again, I'm on overtime, but the, but clearly defining what the goal is because the zoning ordinance as it's written now, as I understand it, allows you to have two temporary signs that aren't permitted on your property. So Ron Allard's birthday isn't near an election. Guess what? He can have two signs with his face on it saying, you know, happy 25th birthday or whatever your next birthday is. But the, what the 30 days pertains to right now is additional signs saying that if you want to have more than two signs that are less than six square feet that are on your property, then you can have those 30 days before an election and it doesn't require a permit. So the zoning ordinance as it's written now does kind of contemplate what you're talking about. There is a question about enforcement and just underscore this point and maybe it's a policy direction that the select board changes. But the policy direction from the select board as it exists right now, it has existed for many years in Barrington, is enforcement by complaint. And so the, the 30 days hasn't been enforced, the nine months. If, if there's a complaint about a sign that isn't in compliance with the zoning ordinance, that's when the town will do something about it from an enforcement standpoint. And that, you know, that matters. But anyway, so maybe you want to talk about policy direction, maybe you don't for developing an amendment.
Because my point is, I think that a lot of these signs contivate, contemplate individual property. And a lot of these signs are in the, in the right way. They're not on, they're not on price. So I think our, our ordinance has now fall short, you know, people are putting them in the right way. And I think, you know, Thursday for election, that's fine. But nine months before the election, I don't think that is fine.
A lot of the town roads were done by subscription, not by planning. You know, the, the book that put out.
Right.
Property owners still have rights to that right away.
Right.
Can't just go in, even cut a tree down, the town can't trim that because he may, or adjacent may have had rights to it. He might even have rights if the road was ever abandoned.
Well, what about right of way, for example, in section 120, you know, 25 and 9?
That's, that's state highway. That, that falls under state guidance. That goes back to the state sign ordinance.
And the property owners out there have a right to control if they're stuck, stuck in the, to the buts of the, the real estate highway.
Yeah.
Which is mostly a gate in front of, half feet wide. The railroad used to run, so.
Well, I can say on, you know, you're right on what, there's, there's definitely signs around there.
The one we're going to keep about the 60 days was to mention by the, um, for a selectman to tell what GR in our, in our VTC, HCO, and RC is to spell them out.
Excuse me, in the actual language.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, that's in the section that already does that.
Yeah, for the vote, for the vote.
Just at the warrant.
On the warrant. Yeah. Yeah.
So to the question about the signs in the right of way, because you're talking about the right of way, there is, as it was explained to me by the town's attorney, there is a distinct difference, and the chair just mentioned this, between the state right of way and the town's right of way. Because 6, 66417, John, you mentioned earlier, that statute applies to the state highways and the state right of way. And the, as it explained to me, the town's zoning ordinance can't be more restrictive than the state law as it relates to the state rights of way. The town rights of way is a different story. And so in our zoning ordinance, 20.2.5 parentheses 1, and this is under the design and safety section of signs, says clearly, signs shall not cause any traffic hazard or any nuisance and shall not be placed within a state or town right of way. So the, the plain text of that, first on the state side, sounds like from our attorney, it's not enforceable. The, the state right of way isn't enforceable because where there's overlap with 66417, but shall not be placed in a town right of way. So that, that's temporary signs, that's permitted signs, that's everything. So the two temporary signs that you get or the additional temporary signs that you get 30 days before an election, all of those should be on your property, which means the, behind the stone wall. Because it says the right of way, not the property line.
But there was, there's something in there that waves that because Realtors are not going to put a for sale sign like back in the yard. They're going to have it out at the edge of the property. I remember John having a whole conversation about this.
Another example of the state signs.
No, I don't think there are.
Yes.
I don't know, Connor.
So in the table, yeah, I stole his book. In the table, sign performance standards by district type approved lots. Every single category, and it varies a little bit by district. Minimum front sex setback ranges from five to 15 feet and that's from the edge of the right of way.
Right, from the edge of the right of way, which puts it even farther back into the yard.
Exactly. So I, I don't.
So if your right of way is, is 25 feet, your sign is going to be anywhere from 30 to.
Be on your floor.
It, right, 30 to 40, it's going to be in like your side yard.
We're going to have a workshop for that.
Well, and I, I, so to zoom back out a little bit. It might be worthwhile, instead of the planning board members trying to write an amendment to the zoning ordinance, to develop a goal of what you want, what changes that you want made, what the goal you want to accomplish with changes and direct staff and the town's attorney to propose changes to the zoning ordinance that would accomplish those goals. And so maybe you set a work session in February, March, that you bring those goals to that meeting.
And April, after ski season.
And have a, you know, an earnest conversation about what the goals are. Hey, I don't want to see signs for a town election nine months before the election. So there's a goal. So no, you can't write a zoning amendment ordinance that says no town elections nine months before, or no town candidate signs nine months before election. But you can craft the ordinance to say that the, you know, we don't want signs and, you know, in this, because your point is I don't like seeing the signs cluttering up the town where the whole point of zoning ordinance is to have, you know, a, a well-kept community. And you don't think the volume and amount of signs is consistent with that.
Yeah, and I also don't think that going, you know, having signs go through the winter, you know, the elections in March for the selectmen. Those signs are going to be trashed, you know, but when the snow melts, they're just going to be trashed inside the road.
Yep.
So I don't think, you know.
It did seem like we had an inordinate amount of signs compared to some of the towns around us, so.
That's a dumb question.
I remember dorm having, having, just wondering if they've found a way to take care of this.
Interesting.
Is there a way to like, you know, if you, like, you know, that sign, all signs have to be picked up 30 days post-election, blah, blah, blah. 10 days, 6, I'm like, I don't remember what it is.
Second Friday after the deal.
Yeah, second Friday, so roughly.
That's the state. We say 10, same thing.
Yeah, let's say 14 days, worst case scenario. So from an election, so worst case scenario, you're, you're two weeks out from an election. Is there a penalty if they don't pick them up?
The town could have taken that.
How can we take them, but they have to store them for a week, is it?
Well, I think we will.
Yeah, it was even longer than that. We actually, right, didn't we vote to shorten the abandoned property piece on that?
Really, that too was dictated by.
RSA, you're right. So I guess the long and the short of it is, is there like, do you, is there a, can you, do you, do you charge somebody? Hey, if you're going to leave your crap out here, we're going to go pick it up and then we're going to like.
Put your charge.
Can just litter it.
Yeah, you get a litter, it's a littering violation. The candidate that owns the sign.
Maybe the candidate put the signs out.
That.
Maybe it's supporters.
Well, they should.
Somebody had to.
Be sort of responsible.
Right. I mean, when I ran for select board, I, I made sure I went around, I had a little key, a little thing that told me where I put all my signs and then I went and picked them up and.
Although I must say, I found one in the ditch in the spring, but I think it was probably in the ditch the second Friday after the.
And you, nothing, but you get a lot of people that screw with the signs.
No, valid point.
Take them and put them somewhere else or try to hide them because they're supporter of.
Something else.
Now you're responsible for the one that the kids picked up on the bike and went loaded on somebody's front lawn. Not that I've ever done that.
No. I will never. I will never admit to having removed the sign for part of a Halloween costume or anything.
No.
And what I'm also hearing is when the, when there are changes to the zoning ordinance or even with the existing zoning ordinance, it sounds like the community would benefit from some simple education documents for residents in the community of what the rules actually are, what to do if you have concerns about the rules, et cetera. And so that's something that can be done with the existing ordinance as it's written and whether you want to change the rules or not, you know, changes to that can be made.
Well, I would think the public would be looking for change.
Yeah. Clarity and consistency in it.
Nobody likes seeing those signs out.
Nope.
No.
It's, it's no different than.
Day before the election.
Well, I think no one does, but I mean, I think they're necessary. And, and I think everyone puts up with them, you know, show them for the election, but, you know, the only signs that are up now, those, those signs, you know, for the selectmen, you know, these are the only ones that get signed up. And that puts everybody else, if, if you're going to be legitimate, follow the rules, you're disadvantaged, Scott, because you're not following the rules.
Hopefully you'll annoy people.
Right, I, I actually think that's the impact that it has.
It could, I believe that.
The only other one that gets me is that Ron, Ron Allen for planning board sign that I see kicking around. I don't.
So you're going to keep the 6, 30 to 60 days and you're going to table any other changes to the sign ordinance until you develop goals to direct staff to develop a proposal?
Yes, I, as Connor, as Connor worded it.
That's a great motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
May I ask for staff clarification? Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so it's, so we are eliminating as of right now, the three point or taking out that, are you in favor of adoption for the removal of section 3.1.8 at this time? That's, you guys wanted to do that, but keep the 60 days in and then have the districts properly spelled out.
Correct.
Okay. And we're taking out the definition for the piling thing and then, but the rest for the board, sounds like we're okay to go with that or is there other comments?
Back page about 800 square feet to 120, I'll just feel and talk about that.
We look at a map that you gave up.
Oh, yeah.
You wanted us to take it and load it up.
Um, because I know there's questions on perhaps what is our, what would the community look like if we increase the lot size? So I asked our GIS analyst just to do a, a map that I wanted him to do too, but they ended up doing one overlapping that shows what it currently is and then what it will look like. I know there was some, a little bit of discussion at the select board meeting last night about that, what the unforeseen future might look like if you do increase the lot size as far as development rights and that sort of thing. But, so that map just shows you the two different colors. Showing the existing and the future.
You proposed it. Have you talked to any towns?
Right.
Like, Rick, Rick, and, and had you talked to?
No, it wasn't, it was me, it was me. I, I, it was my.
Oh, your proposal.
Yeah.
Have you talked to any towns? I mean, do we have any experience with this for?
There are other, I haven't talked personally to any other towns, but there are other towns that have set different density sizes based on the area that they're located.
And I'm curious about, so over. And I, I'm curious about, so over, because they've gone this, uh, long enough that we, they can see the effect upon it. Like, what has that done to the community? Has that reduced, uh, development? They, the town too expensive for families to, uh, move to, like, what's, what do you see in the future when a town does this?
In which way? Like, what, what is the objective?
Something, yeah, I guess what is the objective, and then has that objective been met in those?
Um, I can tell you in, in some of the towns that I've seen it that have larger lot sizes. It definitely slows down, um, the, the influx of people to it. And where you do end up having more confined density. It controls the amount of sprawl, so when you have something come in where, rather than maybe it being like a fifty or a sixty unit subdivision. It ends up only being a thirty unit and you keep more of the rural component. That they're trying to accomplish within rural communities.
But a lot of these have lots of record. So they would get a, a ZBA to build on, because mine was a one acre lot many years after the two acre had been put in.
Yeah. So the way I look at this is.
All this yellow and purple are not gonna be.
It's not yet, it's not even impacted, it's not gonna be impacted by it.
Well, in purple or large enough, they can be subdivided. These, I think these ones are the ones that can be subdivided.
No, they're, they're eighty to a hundred and nineteen thousand square feet. They're not gonna, you're not gonna get a hundred and sixty thousand out of a hundred and nineteen. Cause if eighty thousand's your minimum density, you're not gonna get one six, one sixty out of it. And there are already lots of records, so they're already there. Where, where you're slowing down your impact is in all that bigger blue that. You're, you'll still get subdivisions, you're still gonna get conservation subdivisions. What you're not gonna end up with is, you're not gonna end up with. A wad of houses crammed into it, um, to, to accommodate that.
Townhouses and all that.
And you're gonna put, actually keep more, you're gonna put more land into conservation that way when they do a sub, a conservation subdivision. Cause their yield plan's gonna end up looking a little different, which is something we've been going through as we see these yield plans coming in. Where they're, you know, you, in order to get to a lot, you gotta cross another lot due to a wetland and. And the, the backlots and the minimum frontage that they're creating to cram all these lots into it.
Yeah, but I think that. You know, last time we, I mean, I wanted to talk about the yield, that, that, the yield plan, because it, it didn't make sense to me, but. Didn't seem a lot of appetite to spend a lot of time on that, but that's, that's where it comes from, you know, it's gotta be buildable lots.
Right.
And all the yield plans we get, you know, it's aspirational at best, they, they throw these limits up, and those really are not buildable lots.
Right.
Yes.
Say, look, you're, you're showing this many buildable lots, you really have, you haven't got that many buildable lots. Um, cause the last one, he said eighteen, there's no way there was eighteen lots there. I, he, he, he only has built seventeen. But I wouldn't question whether it's seventeen buildable lots, yeah.
I think there was still one that we couldn't see a drive line, or we couldn't see access to of that.
Well, had a wetland to the, across the.
Definitely right to, the wetlands cover over the, the complete front of the property with, but there's no way. And he said, well, I can give it away, but, you know, my response to that, if you got it yet, you haven't got it, it's not.
Right, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not approved, so you couldn't do it that way.
It's, it's not, if you got the weight you're getting, so it's not buildable lot.
So that would be a pros and a cons.
Right, I, is there, does that get to the root of the question?
Well, like, what was the, um, what are we trying to achieve, and what's the data? We can't be the first person, first community to do it, so I wanted to know how other, how it's gone in other communities.
So, um, there are some, a couple of other communities, I believe Northwood is one, they have a five acre minimum. And when you look at it, what it, um, what it does is it actually helps drive more of that rural density that they're. Trying to accomplish, and where I've seen the impact here, and I saw it sitting in your seat when I was on the select board. Where somebody owns a parcel of land, they're, they're doing recreational shooting or things like that on their land. And they got neighbors calling the police, and then they're like getting state reps involved because they don't like it. And it's their right of use, but because of the way they're crammed in there, because of the way the lot was laid, laid out in the minimum requirement. They meet their minimum setback, and their neighbor might have a, a front lot, back lot, and they're in there next to a bigger lot, but they don't like it. And they're just, they, it, it creates all this issue, and the whole point of.
I don't think a bigger lot is gonna fix that issue.
It's, what it does, it slows down your density load, and it also helps control. The impact you're gonna see on local services. You think about that impact from a school standpoint, you think about that impact. From a, um, a fire, a police.
Yeah, but I think that is, where, where that's the strongest argument is when you have water, a ton of water and soil, which we don't have. Um, so you're really not extending services on, the services are not really that big. To me, the biggest pushback I think I hear is, you know, the conservation subdivisions, you know, the, the row houses, that kind of stuff. I don't hear a lot of people have a problem with a single family on a two acre lot. I don't hear a lot of that myself. I haven't, you know, I haven't got select net, got the breadth that you do have experienced, but I don't hear a lot of people having problems with that.
That was a lot of what I would, I heard when I sat in this, in that seat. Was that the rural nature of our community is getting chewed up and eaten up, and what we're gonna end, what we end up like. Are these suburbs in, to use for an example, like outside of Boston, we have Medford, Med. Medfield, Medford, where there are these two acre lots, and there are these just windy little subdivisions that are all suburbs of a city. And ultimately, that's what happens is you build this all out. That's what you will have.
In those outer suburbs, they are trying to go to conservation subdivisions only because it saves a green buffer.
Right.
Around these things, you know, so they, they, they are attempting to, after, um, okay, what we do.
It's tough, cause they're, they're already.
Yeah, they're on big enough.
No.
To get some good results, they're economically viable, right, yeah.
So.
It's kind of too late for a lot of them.
This is where you have the opportunity to say, okay, by, by going to a, a slightly, I, you know, if I had my way, I'd go five acres. Like, you'd, I'd be truly be a rural community in that, in that regard, which actually controls your service impact. Um, but, that's not the will of the entire board, and I'm one person, so unless I wanted to do it as a, um. Is a written art, written amendment, which I'm not looking to do. It was, what could we, what could we all talk about and agree upon here that was?
So what would you have for frontage on the road? Would be proportional to the two acre lot, so two hundred.
Two hundred, yeah.
Six hundred feet or something?
That was one of the things we were talking about, is you end up with these long stretched out lots. But you have bowling alley lots, as Ron calls them.
Yeah.
Um. But that's not the proposal here, so.
What I agree with, Mister Chairman, in a lot of ways, I mean, we have, as a board and as a community, have to look at. What we're looking at five years from now for Barrington, what is our vision for Barrington five years, two years from now?
Mm-hmm.
Um, contractors come in, they build, they buy, and they leave.
Right. Yep.
For us to clean up. And is that what we want at Barrington, that we tried so hard for many years to preserve our, um, community? And our little village and everything, I feel taxes are needed, we're gonna grow. Why can't we grow more with, uh, more little boutique stores, more desirable things? That people will come to us on the weekend and during their vacation, come in, spend their money and leave. Uh, build ourselves up that way, we do not have the infrastructure, um, to support all these homes. That are trying to get into Barrington, and to support our services, schools, everything, I mean, there's so much more to think about. And again, yes, when I was in Barrington, I have to always say this, when I lived in Dover, I loved Dover in the eighties. Dover's was, I called, they always wanted to give me sportsmen. And now when I drive through Dover, I, I could just scream, because what I loved about Dover is no longer there. It's just one big camp, and it's many peoples, we can get in as many as stores, many as everything, they didn't take it out. They are the sportsmen, but, that they always wanted to be, but in a much different way. So, to this board I address, you, what's the vision for five years of Barrington? What's the community's vision? And let's go on that.
Have, have any of you been to Woodstock, Vermont? It, it, if, you know, even in driving through, you wanna see the impact of zoning dating back almost a hundred years. They have no power lines through the downtown center of their town. That was very specifically and intentionally done from a zoning standpoint, that everything would go underground. Through their downtown center area, and they have this, you know, very lovely quaint, it is the quintessential image of downtown New England. In the way that it was built, and it was done in a very intentional way. And that's really what we're talking about here, is what do we want the intention of Barrington to be? Not, not just one year from now, five years from now, but thirty, forty years from now, what does that look like for the town?
Route four going through there is just a little tiny.
Yeah.
Stop like one twenty-five, or something like ninety, about a track, just.
It's a very.
They put it fifteen mile an hour speed one or two, so you bet.
Mm-hmm, and you can, if you know how, there, you actually can skirt around the whole downtown area.
It's suicide six.
Yep, you don't even have to go that far, if you come into town, you break off, there's a road that breaks to the right, and then it comes up. Yeah, just watch the police as you get down. But, uh. Yep, but that, but that's, that drives the point of like the intentionality of what we're talking about here. And, and I came to Barrington because of the rural aspect of Barrington and what I liked, you know, I don't live in a. Necessarily a little rural area, but I can tell you when I first moved here, being where we are. I used to look across the lake, and probably as a lot, Ron would tell you as well, in the winter time, it was just dark. There were maybe a handful of lights on, now many of those houses are, have been renovated and turned into year-round homes. Even on our little road, there have been multiple houses that have either been built or renovated. In the last, you know, six years. So it's, it's gonna happen, and it's gonna continue to happen, it's just. What is, what do we want out of that? What does it look like?
Well, you know, I share a concern about that, but I don't think that this, this doesn't fix that. You know, this is for, not converting old house, but to do lots.
You're right, but it, it creates a little more breathing room around those lots.
In terms of having a master survey on housing, these are good, really good questions, but in that survey, both as groups.
I mean, well, I think what Andy's suggesting is, Jim, you give the town the opportunity to.
Put it in there, see if they like it or hate it.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I, I mean.
From Massachusetts, I think it's, and we could always change this, I think it's huge, sort of, three acres, I think it's huge, so that's me, I am wrong with it, but, uh. I know you keep up reminding me of Massachusetts.
Yeah, I, I do not think, like personally, I would, I would have way more land if I could. My wife is the same mindset, she's like, I want a little lot like that I don't have to deal with or maintain, and I'm like, no, give me like fifty acres and don't talk to me.
So where do we stand with this amendment?
Mister Chairman, if I may just make that, sorry, um, not their person, so I can't poke at you. Um, just for a discussion point as well, as you know, we're gonna be doing our housing chapter next year. And during that, um, during that process of updating it, they do a workshop to show you. Like what your town would look like if y'all were, had bigger lots, smaller lots, et cetera. So I don't know if the board would on entertain, um, to wait until we hear what those results are, and also the results from the survey. Um, from the current land use in trans, well, transportation may not play a part of this. Um, to see what kind of data, since there's questions of like, what data do we have, or what, what, um, other justifications can we lean on? It, it may be from a planning perspective, a good idea to see what comes out of that and propose it next year. Um, just to throw it out there for the board in general, um, but I'm here as staff to do, direct however you want me to do it. Just wanted to make sure that that is known, that, that, that's what we'll be working on next, and they can help us draft zoning, um. Amendments for the twenty twenty-four town meeting in relation to these things that you're talking about today.
My, my general feeling on it is, and this is up to the board, is I'd like to put it in front of people and still run it through. With the master plan and the housing, and if they come back with something different, then. Like, yeah, we are just, um, we can amend it at that point, but I, but my feedback from the community has been. A request for larger lot sizes, which is why last year I made the recommendation to change the, the village district zoning. Um, from the ten thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet.
I heard individual people, and these are people who pretty much have lived in Barrington for a while, so they were saying, well, if I had to buy even more land. And it's so expensive to live here in Barrington, I probably couldn't afford to buy, and that was. Increases the cost of the landowner who wants to come and build a single family house.
I don't think that's gonna change, you know, like if you, you look, these are, this is a conservation subdivision up here. And the lots start at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The conservation subdivision's still gonna happen, and the lot prices are still gonna be there, the average home price in Barrington's four hundred and fifty grand.
I think our efforts to affordable housing have, uh, the projects are supposed to be affordable, that becomes affordable.
I'll be honest, like my, I, and, and I was very upfront about this when I was on the select board. My desire was to drive the mill rate down in town, which drives the value of property up. When I was elected to the select board, the tax rate was twenty-six dollars and change a thousand, when I left, it was nineteen fifty-one. And that's through a combination of good work from the town administrator, the department heads. Everybody being responsible, but driving the vision of saying, hey, we're not gonna add a whole bunch of stuff. Um, quickly, and we're not gonna create a huge impact here, we're gonna be reasonable about that. Because the real value people get is in the fact that you're not paying that money year over year in taxes that you don't get back. What you can, what your difference in tax rate is versus the value of your property, actually is what drives affordability and creates wealth for people. And, and I'll give you a perfect example, I just got my, my mill rate. For up north, and I had shared this with Connor today. My, that, my new mill rate up in Bartlett is four dollars and ninety-seven cents a thousand. So what's that do to your property value? It drives your property value up. That's the value you wanna have.
Well, the reason the mill rate went down is because property values did go up.
They did.
I mean, we're spending, but I'm spending roughly the same, I mean, we really haven't reduced costs very much, but maintain costs.
Hmm.
And the valuation base has gone up substantially.
Right, but the key is not to, to, to add so much more to your burden that you drive that, that your, your mail rate goes up. It may come down, but it doesn't come down proportionally, and if you look from the town standpoint, we always drove the mill rate down proportionally, it was an even change. It was one for one, if the value went up, the mill rate came down a hundred percent in relation to that. That's, that is good, responsible, planning, land use, and running of your community and your board. And not to throw a zinger at the school board, but if you look, the school board always added more, and their rate did go up a little bit, so you didn't.
Also went up to what, what is it, Colin, like one point three five billion dollars?
Oh, yeah, and the assessed value of the town.
One point four.
Four, yeah.
Point four, one seven.
It came down more or less of a portion of the baggage.
Yeah.
But that means you maintain your spend, which is, which is a competition.
And if you look, you look at our surrounding.
Three bucks a thousand is, which is really bottom of the list of jobs.
Eighth, eighth percentile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Town of Barrington, municipal government is.
That's what actually drive, like, how do you get peo, people, I always wanna know, how do you wanna, what drives you to wanna live in Barrington? You wanna have good schools, you wanna have land that you can use in and around you. And you wanna have good property values with low tax rates, or lower tax rates. And.
And supermarket downtown.
And, and those are, that's it, that's what we're talking about, like. Cons, conservation of land use, lower property taxes by driving, keeping the mill rate low, and then.
Well, let me put my two cents in, you know, I'm pretty, I, I don't know that I'm gonna vote for this. But I think I'm okay putting it in, you know, I mean, winning it forward at the town vote voted, I mean, the planning board voted. Five to one, or, you know, whatever, so I, I think that's, put it for the people, put it in. But I probably will not vote for it, so the little thing I'm using, the planning board voted, I probably do a negative, but I still think it should be in.
I appreciate the support on, I mean, people either are or aren't.
Okay, so are there any more?
Anything else uh, that you have, Vanessa, for amendments?
Nope, just what you have before us, I took out the two, or I think we're good. So at the, at the public hearing, um, we will, or the board will vote on each one of them, there, well, there'll be public comment, closed public comment, the board will vote on each one of those um, proposed zoning amendments. If the majority of the vote passes, they'll go before um the voters, um, if there are any changes, or there's public comment that wanna have changes, um, we will have a second public hearing, um, which will be the seventeenth. Um. And also, just to know, I think I already, I apologize for repeating myself, but we are gonna be doing this um, during our normal um, public hearing process, but we're gonna start at um, at six thirty instead of six, and that we had mentioned that before, unless there's any um, opposition to just keep it at the six thirty time. And um, I think that's what I ha- have it for the zoning amendments, um. I guess going down with the, for the other business, though, I don't know, the board would wanna entertain.
This item, I'll open a public comment.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm just waiting for Vanessa to.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop rambling, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to open public comment. We do have a gentleman here, he did raise his hand earlier, and I would like to give him an opportunity to comment.
I have a question about.
If, if, if you could, just for, because this is recorded and for public austerity, um, come on up to the microphone or the table, or what it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, either one's valid.
Yeah, whatever one works.
Name and address first.
Uh, Morgan Carter, five Smoke Street, Barrington, Mantra.
Welcome, Morgan.
I have a question about something. Right, um, the second one, where are you in favor of the adoption of amendment?
The X, that.
Yeah, amendment X.
That's just as, the number gets assigned to it, once the order has been selected, it always starts with school and the, or uh, with.
Election of officers.
Election of officers, and then a, a number will get put into that where that X is.
I have a great on the uh, second one down. To Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section seven point three.
Um, to Barrington.
That's how, already I said.
The. Right. Regarding, so what it is um to require that the home occupation be conducted entirely within the structure of a single-family dwelling to limit the square footprint of the home occupation to thirty percent or five hundred square feet, whichever is lesser, and to limit the number of non-resident employees to one. What, what uh, what are you looking to have commented on on that, or clarified on it?
So say I bought a building
Mm-hmm.
and I'm looking to start up a business, I'm only allowed to use thirty percent of the building?
No, if you buy a building for commercial purposes, that'd be a separate category. This is a home business, this is a home business, home occupation, where you have a incidental use inside, inside your house, for example, you you have a wood shop in your house, and you make it side. Inside, so that's home, that's home occupation, we do it with things, it's related. And this home business, that's separate.
That's seven point four is home business, so there's.
Seven four. If you bought a business, I understand, working business, that's completely separate, that's not a compliment.
So a home occupation is geared to somebody who might have um.
A cricket?
What's that?
Something like a cricket and then making t-shirts or something?
Yeah, yep.
One of the reasons I say that is the best of my first year ago.
Mm-hmm.
And the next one down is closure in the lawn here, this is.
Right.
The next one down is a bit, you know, a whole business could have a much more larger area to, to propose that two thousand square feet or ten percent of your lot, you could actually put your equipment.
Right, store your.
And then we are saying, spot a commercial building. That's an entirely different thing, I can be honest, for such commercial, I mean, people should.
So it's just your sister and her house doing cricket thing.
Yeah, no, when I was reading it, I was just a little confused on it. So can I ask another question?
Of course.
When does a small business become a commercial business? Say, when would a small business have to start paying commercial taxes?
Um.
All that's the taxes question.
Yeah, that.
So there's in, for local taxes, there's no such thing as commercial taxes. So the property taxes that you pay to the town are based on the assessed value of the property. Now, the assessed value of a commercial property might be higher because, you know, TurboCam's buildings are assessed at nine and eleven million dollars. Um, and so they're assessed more than somebody's house, well, there's more there. And there's more value there. If TurboCam were to close up shop and sell them, they would be worth more. Caleb's Country Store, if Caleb's Country Store was sold, it would sell more for more as a commercial property because it's got great frontage on Route Nine, it's right next to the intersection of Route one twenty-five. And so their commercial properties might be assessed higher, but that's just because the fair market value is higher. Um, commercial businesses do pay uh, uh, business profits, taxes, and others to the state of Mantra.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the town, though. Uh, but there was another layer of that question, which I let you, let you answer, about at what level does a home occupation become a home business, become a full-blown business?
And your home, I mean, your home business can be, you can be technically a commercial business in your home because that's the scope.
Talking about state taxes, like enterprise tax, profits tax, which are state taxes.
Yeah, you're staying at a degree beyond. Like, what level would you consider or change from a small business inside of your home to a commercial business?
And that's the whole point of these zoning amendments. So what the zoning ordinance does is the zoning ordinance intends to define that. Um, and so right now, the home business and home occupation provisions um, indicate things like a certain amount of square footage of your home, a certain number of employees, things like that. And so the proposed amendment for the.
Seven point three.
Seven point three, which is the home occupation, as I understand it, intends to clarify what the, what the limits are to allow you to be a home occupation, which has like this many requirements. Uh, if you expand beyond that, then you would be considered a home business, which the biggest step, the biggest additional requirement there is that you have to come before the planning board, notify your neighbors, and give them an opportunity to you know, talk with the planning board and with you through a site review process of your business and the impact of your business on the community. And then if you grow farther than that, and it's a full commercial um, use, then you would need to be properly zoned, generally not in a residential area. Um, and you would need site plan approval through the planning board. Again, you're notifying your neighbors, you're, you know, talking to state agencies and, and everything like that. So the, the town zoning ordinance defines those levels, those limits um, in those way, in those ways. It can be defined a variety of different ways, but the town zoning ordinance relies on how much of your house are you using, how many employees do you have, do you have things outside of the property uh, stored outside of the property, it's like I'm forgetting something that's, that's delineated in there, but those types of um
facts. Uh, display of goods, it's because talks, talks about a.
And those things are a lot, it was from the planning board.
Having a certificate of occupancy.
So it's trying to define, what's your amount of, now come, now to five.
You talk to the building inspector.
Right.
You get a, you get a license um, from, and it's free. Uh, but what the, the intent of that step of the process is that the, so the building inspector can help determine to make sure that you're in the right category um, of a business use. Uh, because as zoning administrator, I understand zoning ordinance, applies the zoning ordinance uh, and can say, oh, well, you have two employees, well, that's actually a home business. And so for a home business, you make an application to the planning board for site plan approval, and you have to meet these, you know, criteria.
It may, and part of that might be the fire chief goes out and evaluates the site or the road agent to make sure parking is adequate for it, and you, and that would be something you present in your planning approval on that, saying, okay, look, I you know, I'm gonna have two employees, and this is my, how many people I expect would be here at any given time, so I have parking for them and lighting and all the, all the accommodations spelled out in our ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
To help?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Um, this time I'll close public comment. And um, is there any other business that needs to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Becky's daycare, the daycare that came in front of us, has been licensed, a, it's not a bad track.
Great to hear. Thank you for the feedback on that. Uh, go, go ahead, Vanessa.
Um. For the board's consideration tonight, um, I wanted to bring up to discuss and see if the um, board did not wanna hold a um work session in January due to the public meetings that we have for the zoning amendments, if we do not have a work session, um, ideas for a work session.
Uh, I'm okay with canceling it if everyone else is.
She's like.
Yep, everybody's on board.
Yeah.
So motion to cancel the January twentieth uh, work session. Roll call vote. Now, bye. All right, January twentieth work session is canceled since we're gonna have all these public hearing meetings.
Are we gonna vote on these?
Thank you.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
No voting.
January third, the book, that you'll vote on them after public comment.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, uh, make a motion to adjourn. Now, bye. All right, I apologize, I was targeting seven thirty, five of eight seems to be the best I could do.
Yeah, felt that.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Connor, for setting everything up.